Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Franklin Planting Board Meeting. This meeting is audio and video recorded. We also have a Zoom meeting number, the caller number. The caller number is three one two six two six six seven nine nine. And the meeting number is pound eight five nine one 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 zero zero four five nine. And I guess we'll start with general business. Form H for Grove Street. Amy, if you could, please.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did provide a letter that came in this morning that Beta was out at the site. This was a project that was approved back in December third, two thousand and eighteen. It was to create a second egress at the site to be only used by, I believe it was a tow and trucker employees. It would not be accessed by any of their customers. The site, it required that they put in some granite curb around each side and fencing. And I believe there's also a sign that is like a do not enter, and that's for the public. So Beta's been out there. They've provided the report. The only minor field change that's been noted on the as-built plans is the driveway with fourteen feet instead of fifteen feet. Given this is for private access only, I don't see that has a big deal.
Mike, you also have?
TBW is outside of this, yes.
Okay, anybody from the board? Have any comment, question? Okay. Just make a motion to approve the Form H for seventy-nine Grove Street. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll go to next line. That would be Glenn Meadows Leasing Office.
Could I just back up on one second? Is that going to be a four zero vote? Or would you like to do a roll call vote and include Jen?
Sorry. Roll call vote, Greg Rondo?
Yes.
William David?
Yes.
Rick Power?
Yes.
Jen, Jennifer Williams?
Yes.
Beth Wirling, yes.
Thank you. I guess we'll go right into the Glenn Meadows Leasing Office. Amy, if you could, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, kind of a lot had happened a little bit more since Thursday to this afternoon with the site, where they came in with a partial Form H. They did, they originally didn't have the drainage to collect the roof drains, and they got a drain runoff. But they've since, in the past couple of days, gotten that installed. So actually, I'm reading an email that Beta had sent me this afternoon, that they have completed the grading and added the downspouts and the gutters. The as-built notes the same. So please forward to the board for tonight. I believe that the only thing they had left to do was some landscaping. And other than that, the site's pretty much complete.
So I guess I had a question.
They do have the engineer and applicant is on Zoom if there's any questions to be asked.
Okay. On Beta's review, based on the site visit this morning, he has approximately nine, ten items. How many of those items were completed since, well, to today then? Do you happen to know?
He didn't give me an updated sheet for me. He just, he just indicate, if you want to read them off, maybe the engineer can also answer the questions online.
Engineer of record? Does the gentleman know?
Is he here, Tony? Is your engineer?
I don't see him.
Okay, well, maybe you can help.
You can answer the questions, but.
Okay.
Everything is done except the lumo, but they wanted to do a bigger patio. So we did luma around the patio area, and they wanted to add two gas grills. Other than that, all the lum is spread, and every item is checked off.
Gas grill's natural gas or propane?
Natural. The natural gas grills are not on the original site plan. It's something they just decided to add, something to do with credit from the state or something they decided afterwards.
I'd like to see them located on a drawing or something. Some feedback, just to make sure they're in a safe location. Like your thoughts, Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Beta's been doing the inspection for construction, so I haven't been onto the site yet. But if they're making changes, then it'd be good to at least see something so we know where those are going. And Tony had mentioned that if they're increasing the size of the patio, we'd like to see something on that to see how big it is, does it affect any of the drainage? How much is it being increased? So there'd be a few questions there to take a look at.
We can even discuss for the partial tonight, just so they can get occupancy. And we can add that to the plan and have it wrapped up probably by the next meeting anyways.
Are you comfortable with that? Chair, you're good with that, Joe?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just had a few questions about this. There's a Beta review that has comparison of the as-built plan versus approved plan. Is that something that we need to take into consideration on this?
I was going to ask for all the differences on the next one, just to complete everything out. But if they just need this for occupancy, we just. But it's not a final release, just a partial.
Partial.
Mike, you comfortable with that?
I think that makes sense. I mean, yeah, that way they still have to come back for the final Form H. Any outstanding items, both have a chance to.
And all the necessary changes. So I would say maybe run the changes that you're going to do through a couple of the departments to make sure it makes sense before you come back for final, you don't get it.
Although you could go directly through Beta, and they'll disseminate that to the rest of us now.
Just for my comment, they did actually submit a revised as-built this morning that I put, that has some of the changes, but obviously doesn't have the gas grills on here. And they're going to make the patio bigger. So they will definitely still need an updated as-built, but this is a little bit more updated from the one that you originally got last week.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
So Amy, I'm just looking in the packets here. Do we have the actual Form H that they're looking to release here? Copy of that?
Yes. Should be in.
I have part of it, yeah.
The A, oh, I got it.
Yeah?
Yep, I got it.
Okay.
Yeah. Is that list accurate then for what you want to consider a partial release? Or do we want to add, including the items listed on this memo?
Well, we don't, yeah, they since, they since. Yeah.
Listed on this partial, this Form H only lists handicap railings to be complete prior to twenty-eight meeting, landscaping and rear patio, where this Beta memo, I know some of them have been completed, but there's a list of thirty-six, seventy-eight, ninety-nine, what, thirteen items? So I guess just what is the difference between the two? The release and the Beta view?
Your thoughts, Amy?
Oh, I just, I'm sorry, I don't have the Beta memo in front of me. I should have had it. Yeah, let me take, if you got it. The railings, the handicap railings are up, we do know that. Let's see if I can base a plan. Okay, the line of work.
Just release it with Beta's comments, and then we'll get the updated drawings and the updated data for Mike for the.
Prozedges, basis, and rough graded, that's been done.
And then they can come back with a final checklist by Beta that has been completed. That we're there, we don't miss anything with the who we're reporting us right now. Does that make sense?
If you reference the Beta list with the partial Form H, that'd be incorporated into it, yes.
Everybody in agreement with that?
Yep.
Sounds good. So all in favor to release?
Got it. Just may make a motion to do a partial release Form H for Glenn Meadows Leasing Office, including a revision to include the Beta memo. Amy, what's the date on that memo?
March tenth.
March tenth, yes.
Tenth.
And then the updated stuff that we'll have to get on the drawings as well.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Get to roll call.
Yep, Greg Rondo, William David?
Yes.
Rick Power?
Yes.
Jennifer Williams?
Yes.
Beth Wirling, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we go to just an endorsement for Byfusis Street for Factory Square. Amy, do you have any?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I did not include a memo as I was going to refer it to Beta as well as Mike Maglio. We did, Gary with Beta and myself and their engineer did have a Zoom call like a week and a half ago regarding some of the outstanding items for endorsement that they, that were requirements to see. There was a list of items from Beta, and Mike had a few lists of those items. So the engineer said that they would revise the plans and send them over, and they sent them over. And I think Mike can elaborate a little bit more. Upon reviewing them, he didn't feel they incorporated those changes. And I apologize, I don't know where Gary is tonight. He was going to be present, but I haven't heard from him, so something might come up.
So was it through Beta the comments, or Mike, you had the comments as well?
It was through BOM.
So the, Mr. Chairman, if I may, so the condition of the approval incorporated Beta's review letter from December second, two thousand and twenty-one, there was a list of ten items on that list that was supposed to be addressed prior to endorsement. Several of them, I think, were all set, but there's still a couple outstanding that we saw the updated plans last week. It looked like a couple still were missing. And then there's a question about the final updated comprehensive stormwater management report. If that was, I know Beta was looking to receive that review to see if they included everything on that one. So it looks like there's still a couple of outstanding issues that still might be that weren't fully incorporated into the plans, yeah.
So just, I guess we make a motion just to continue till April eleventh, if you want.
You don't even need a motion, it's just general business. So if the board chooses to take no action, you can take no action on it. You can follow up, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Next is the seven oh five hearing for One Twenty Constitution Boulevard.
Is this okay over here, or after the board?
Good evening, everyone. Katie Emright with Howard Stein Hudson. I am the project engineer for the project at One Twenty Constitution Boulevard in Princeton. It's been a while. I was before you in September. And at that point, we proposed parking lot for an addition of fifty spaces. So we had twenty-three existing spaces on site. The property owner was looking for thirty thousand square foot building. The property owner was looking to be able to accommodate the thirty thousand square foot building better with parking and the existing tenant there. We were looking at providing additional amount of spaces to essentially bring us to sixty-nine spaces. Sorry, I thought to twenty-three to sixty-nine, so we have an addition of forty-six spaces. On that plan, we have just quartz pavement, and we heard the board and staff loud and clear that quartz pavement was not going to be acceptable for the parking lot construction. So since then, we've done a lot of back and forth with our client, who is the architec architect, who is working with the property owner. We really drilled down on what they need to function today. And so we reduced the amount of parking considerably. We're now looking at twenty-seven spaces in addition to the twenty-three, so it brings us to fifty. And that will allow the current tenant to operate as they would like to. What that does is it maintains the three loading areas that are there today, but it adds some parking towards the back of the lot here off the existing pavement. And it also still provides in addition in front of the building, which is where all of the parking had proposed previously. The idea is that the building remain operational, and people be able to park here during construction. So we're really trying to make it so that, originally, we had one phase of construction out front here. Now there's two phases. This would have to be done first, followed by the rear section here, so that people are able to park in, and the business be able to function. What this does is it reduces that front parking lot from fifty spaces to twenty-one spaces, which reduces the impervious surface considerably over what we had before. Believe we were about fourteen to fifteen thousand square feet additional impervious in the original application, and now we're just going to have nine thousand square feet with additional impervious. So what we really tried to do was work with the existing impervious areas that we had to utilize them to the best of our ability to add additional parking. So what we did was we put a WB sixty-four vehicle on the site and planned all of the churning movements throughout those three loading docks to make sure that if we were striping additional areas in that back area, that we would be able to park in those areas, and there wouldn't be any interaction with the coming and going of tractor trailer trucks. What we also did was proposed striping in that area. Right now, it's a little bit of a free-for-all back there. There's no stripes, so people kind of park wherever they want. This would provide a little bit more direction, where it's not just a swath of pavement back here. Now we're creating a new little lot area here. There's a gazebo here on this pad here. And then this area would be striped for the ability for those tractor trailer trucks to come and go. What we looked at back there also was, was there any opportunities for us to reduce the amount of pavement and add any landscaping? So we bumped the curbs out a tiny bit wherever we could to accommodate that and really look to reduce the amount of increased impervious on site. The site is difficult for drainage. We did test pits in the front of the site where the project was originally anticipated to be. We did test pits throughout that area. Water table is just under four feet, which with a two-foot offset to the bottom of any drainage system, gives us very little room to play with. And we're dealing with an existing building, existing doors, existing loading areas, so there's not much adjustment there, right? So when we were looking originally at the quartz pavement, that kind of seemed to help kind of combat that a little bit. Looking at it from a conventional standpoint, you can see we have significant drainage under that front area, and we proposed two separate systems. And the reason we've done that is because to capture as much water as possible that comes off that pavement, we need to be able to get it into a system. To get it into a system, we need to meet a rim-to-invert requirement. And so a shallow catch basin with a four-foot slump is about a two-point-eight rim-to-invert requirement per feet. So it has to drop down, and then it has to be able to flow into an underground system. So what we've done here is we've captured as much flow as we possibly can into an infiltration system. So this system will capture the stormwater from this area here, some of this hill coming into here, capture it in deep-sunken-to-catch basins, send it into an isolator row, storm tech chambers. These are only the sixteen-inch profile chambers, so they're very shallow, embedded in stone. This will allow water to infiltrate. So we can capture these some pretty catch basins, go to an isolator row, which will capture the additional TSS, and go out to those infiltration chambers and infiltrate. Because we have to come down and connect to an existing parking lot, and because this is going to be parking, this grade here can only be five percent. Because if you open a car door and something very near the five percent, you're going to hit the next person down, or it's going to fly out of your hand. So we really try to keep that at five percent or less. So we come up at five percent, and then we level off. That's so we can get as much water into the system as possible, because we need to create that cover and that fill over the system. So the second system here is actually planned to be retention. So we're not infiltrating. And actually, we've buried that system, so it's a little bit within the seasonal high water table, and we're wrapping it in a poly barrier so that it's impervious to stormwater. I'll talk a little bit about that as we move on. What that does is there's no water flowing into that, we're just slowing it down. We're capturing it, we're letting it build up, and we're slowing it down. So we don't increase our pre-post development runoff to the existing drainage system for Constitution Boulevard in that park. Everything here is captured and comes out and hits the drainage system that runs in the street. It's all captured together. What else we've looked at is essentially trying to better as much as we can the rest of the system. And what we've done is seem to all interact at one area. All of these pipes, as many as we can find connections to, and there are some here that kind of go off to nowhere, because there are no plans, and the surveyor couldn't find anything. So some of the stuff we're going to have to dig up during these drawings. Everything appears to connect in through here and connect in through the drainage system or connect into this drainage system here, which runs throughout the park. So what we've done is changed this to allow, to basically put in a CDS unit, which allows for TSS removal of the capturing of the existing catch basins that are on site. So this has been basically added here so that the existing catch basins within the paved surface will run through the CDS unit and provide that existing, provide that additional treatment before it goes out to the main system. What this also does is because we've brought the parking back a little bit, there's less retaining walls on the site, which also helps with construction costs. So there's only a small retaining wall in this corner here, and it's less than four feet in height, so it's only an empty wall essentially. That was really to capture this catch basin. There's catch basins all around the building, because the building was essentially built in a hole. So everything around here is higher, and the low point, which is why the drainage is so difficult, is really this close to the property line is where the low point is. So what we're trying to do is capture as much as possible. What we've also provided you with is an updated lighting plan. There wasn't enough lighting, obviously, out here, because this is just grass area now. So we've got an additional light fixture here, there's an additional light fixture here, and there's an additional fixture on the building here, which provides proper, basically, light spread so that people who are parked in this parking lot can see their way to the door. And we've also provided you with a planning plan, which essentially just adds street trees in between the existing street trees that are there now, but closer to the parking lot. So there'll be a varying tree line along that street, which will allow for the existing street trees to remain, and then some trees to be scattered throughout, in between this parking lot. At the top end, it's about four and a half feet above the building elevation. This part of the building doesn't have any windows in it, it's just a block wall. So we didn't propose anything. Originally, we had proposed some findings here, but when I went out to the site and looked, there's no window on that wall, so it's completely blind on this wall here. In doing this, we've also checked and re-rated the handicap accessible parking and the walkway to make sure that this is all compliant with those regulations also. With that, I believe we did get a letter from planning staff, we did get a letter from your engineer, and we have a letter from Beta. We're certainly looking at working with engineer staff and also Beta to get anything that they have taken care of. One of the things that Mike had asked us for was to kind of, to kind of go through the motions of what we did to try to capture as much as possible. And I think if we have a conversation over the phone, we can walk you through. We beat this to death. It was so hard to get this to work because of how little space we have between the property line and how little space we have to the water table. So we really did, I believe, as best as we possibly can with the drainage on site. So with that, we'd certainly like to hear any comments of the planning board tonight and continue to work with staff to hopefully get this to.
Thank you. I guess, you know, if we go to Mike real quick, I know there's still some stuff that has to be done, but if you can give a quick recap, that'd be great.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we did review the plans, and they did a commendable job as far as what they're working with. It is a difficult site. The layout is pretty good, what they were able to accomplish there. We had about a half dozen or so comments. One thing I just wanted to point out is the new parking area. They do our proposing vertical granite curb around there. The rest of the existing parking lot has cave-caught berm, so they're looking to upgrade the new section. The one real comment that I was concerned about had to do with the underground infiltration bases. Well, one was an infiltration basin, and that one seems to be designed appropriately and looks like it will work correctly. The detention basin, which sits lower in the groundwater, within four inches or so of the high water table. I'm concerned with that. I guess the, my concern is just the proposal to keep it watertight would just be use a poly barrier underneath that trying to keep the stormwater separated from the groundwater. My concern there is that it'd be very difficult to get that, keep that as watertight between seams and the poly and just being punctured during construction. I'd be concerned with that part of it. But the approach, I mean, it did do a job with the approach. Like I said, it's a difficult site, trying to make it work. But that's my outstanding concern, is the lower detention basin sitting within the groundwater table.
I mean, Mr. Chair, that was one thing that I meant to put into my, when I got further along in my. Can I add to that, just as a start? So one of the things that I ran with was just to check. I checked, first I checked the storm tech, and we do have to put six embedded in the pump. We absolutely do, even though it's pretension. One of the things I did do, though, is the reason that it's embedded that far was to capture as much water as possible. So to do that, what I did today, and so the invert is what causes it to be that low. What I did today was put in hydrocat, I ran it with a base model of saying that, you know, during those two or three months of the year when we pack seasonal high, what it would do with a base flow in the system. So say something did happen with the system, you know, was a puncture or something to that effect. I ran it saying that there'd be standing water in the system already, and would the system still work? And it did. So it's more of a function of elevation versus in-water table or out. So to move it up that four inches, we'd have to move the catch basins uphill to accomplish that, which we could do, but then we have a problem with the pre-impervious wall. So that's something I think we can talk through, too. But I did run it with that base flow, just to say, you know, we need to invert that low, but what if there was water? And what would happen to it if it's still? So we can definitely talk more about that, but I did look into that some more.
Okay. Anything else, Mike?
No, that was the main point, is concerned with that lower base.
Just, I just want to chime in real quick. Ironically, I just built a similar system to this about four hundred feet at work, rather large. We used a forty-mill bottle, and they welded the seams. So that may take care of your concerns. Or thirty-mill welded seams, then it creates a more fluid fabric, stone, sand base, and then we build it up that way, so keeping a separation between the two. Just maybe something to think about. Did the exact same, just five times aside, if that's all. But I guess, Gary, you didn't respect.
We did not get an opportunity to really complete it. We started it, but unfortunately, we weren't able to complete it in time for this hearing. But we will have it sometime this week. But a lot of Mike's comments, we pretty much had the same, we had the same issues. A lot of them were, we agree, she's doing her best, again, in terms of trying to meet stormwater standards relative to what she's implementing. In terms of even that, and the same thing with the curbing. The existing curbing on the outside, on the far-left side of the building, is already cave-caught berm, and they wanted to maintain that. But the new, the new parking, they've got vertical granite all the way around. So I think that's something that the board should consider.
Sure.
Other than that, she's right, there are a lot of loose ends. There seems to be pipes everywhere.
Sure, okay. Anybody have any comment?
I do, but. I just have one, going to the pipes being removed. So there's one here that says pipe to be removed. Is that just being eliminated?
That's correct.
And that's in the old parking lot?
Yeah, that's on the old that we're reconnecting.
Okay, and the other thing was the existing lot hydrant to be removed and reused. I don't see it anywhere on the drawing, like where is it going to be relocated?
Right, so it's here? Basically, I think. Just ended up being. Right, so currently.
And is that the only hydrant on the site, by the way?
It's back here right now, and basically, we're just shifting it over so that it's here.
It's in the center of the proposed parking area.
Right. And then. I'm not sure if there's.
I don't see it happening, so. Or she for.
Okay, the only one being impacted.
Yes, the only one being impacted, like. It's new, and the additional ones on set.
That's it? Good point. I know.
Rick, you had a question? Yeah, just looking. Do you have somewhere on one of these sheets that shows snow storage, potential snow storage?
That was one of the comments, I certainly have to add that.
And then a dumpster, do you have a dumpster anywhere?
Is that?
Do you have a dumpster anywhere?
Yeah, well, we have to, I believe the dumpster is here now. I can relocate that, and also, snow storage for the existing parking is going to continue like it does today. But the new parking, this is all uphill here, along this side, the back injury into the drainage system, and it's captured by that for the.
You could put it on the plan, too.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Will?
I'm good.
Just wanted to say thank you to the applicant and to your engineering firm for taking a hard look at this and doing the improvements and hearing what we said at the last meeting when you were here. I think this is a much better plan and addresses a lot of the issues. Definitely think you can probably work through the remaining issues with town engineer as well as AIDA group, peer reviewer, once you get those comments and reports, seeing. Thank you.
Well, Jay?
Can I ask a question? Sorry. One of the comments from Amy and the group were, are any additional sidewalks or pedestrian areas going to be provided for access to the front door of the building? I guess one of the questions or concern is the new parking being proposed. Obviously, there's a lot of grading that's being done to allow that parking to happen and it's a pretty steep hill, but do you think people are gonna try to walk up that hill to the front door rather than go to the sidewalk? You know, is there any additional either striping or crosswalks or pedestrian paths that should be indicated on the plan for the benefit of the employees? So that was my only question. I know it's a challenging site and I, everyone else's comment commends you on coming up with a solution, so I know it's tricky, but just my only question. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
So I did look at that today. As we stated, it is a challenging site, and so I don't want to put a sidewalk on the plan that certainly doesn't meet ADA requirements. So the sidewalk, if we were to run a sidewalk, we would probably run it close to the building, but it would end up coming all the way down and having to kind of backtrack back in so that it's less than 5% the entire way. So I think people certainly are gonna run up the 301 slope to get to their car at some point in time. We could look at that aspect, I just didn't want to put anything in, again, a walkway or route that wouldn't be accessible to that door, so.
Okay.
If that's the pleasure of the board, then certainly staff, you can look at that.
I would probably look at it with TPW and Gary, just to be safe.
Sure.
Give it a shot anyways. Anybody in the audience? Jen, you're all set, too?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so you're getting close, you've come a long way. It's a substantial change from the last one, that's for sure. I think our next meeting was probably going to be the April 11th to continue it. We're booked up, but that'll give you enough time to work everything out with DPW and AIDA, I presume?
Yes.
Okay. So I make a motion to continue to April 11th?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Roll call. Yep.
Greg Rondo?
Yes.
William David?
Yes.
Rick Powers?
Yes.
Jennifer Williams?
Yes.
Beth Wurling, yes.
Thank you.
Very much. Do you need touch?
Yes, we'll just move on to our next public hearing, which would be for Upper Union Street Site Plan. Anybody?
They are on Zoom.
On Zoom?
They are on Zoom.
Yeah.
Make a motion to waive the notice for reading.
So move.
Second.
Favor? Aye.
I've got a roll call vote.
Yeah, do a roll call.
Greg Rondo?
Yes.
William David?
Yes.
Rick Power?
Jen?
Jennifer Williams?
Yes.
Beth Wurling, yes.
Is the engineer of record bonds, though, give us an introduction, please?
Hi, yes. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Nick Dewhurst. I'm with Bowler. Here with me tonight is Randy Myron with Bowler, David Sisson, the architect on the project, and Matt Clark, the owner, developer of TMC Holdings and Development, is not able to make it tonight. So it'll just be myself, Randy, and David. Am I able to share my screen?
We can, yep, I can give, Max, if you can give permission, please, to share.
All set.
It's still saying post-disabled participant screen sharing.
You should be all set.
Yep, thank you, Maxine. Can everyone see this?
Yep.
Yes.
Awesome. So just to kind of orient ourselves here, the project is along Upper Union Street. Here's 495, Upper Union Street is right here. We're a few lots over from the Best Western and adjacent to the Union Street Business Park. So just to give a little bit of background for the members of the board, back in 2005, the planning board approved the Union Street Business Park, which is the plan that we're looking at here. The original approval was for three separate multi-tenant industrial buildings with associated utilities, drainage, and ultimately, the developer built this westernmost building and the associated parking, and then subdivided, subdivided the land just beyond the parking of that building, and then actually never moved forward with constructing phases two and three, the additional two buildings in their associated parking. As part of the construction, he built this curb cut alone, as well as a sign, but this curb cut, all this parking, and the two other buildings were not built, and just subdivided. And that's kind of how the lot has sat today. When the developer built this, the one building that was constructed, he did clear the adjacent lot, but that's really, that's kind of all the work that took place on that lot. And since then, our client, Matt Clark, with TMC Holdings and Development, has purchased this lot, and he's looking to build a similar, actually, an identical type of use, a multi-tenant industrial building with associated parking, similar layout to the adjacent Union Street Business Park. The building is 42,750 square feet, which is less than what the other two buildings that were not constructed were total to be. You can see that we're proposing landscaping throughout the site, a few street trees, different types of shrubs, along with the sign. We'll pull that up in a minute. With this project, we did go in front of the Designer View Commission and received a certificate of vote from them. I can forward that along to the board if they don't have that. So the project proposes 90 parking spaces. There's 15 separate individual bays within the building. Basically, how the building operates, I'm not sure if anyone's familiar with the adjacent building, but different type of tenants can have the ability to rent out either one unit or multiple units. Each unit has an overhead door as well as a pedestrian door. They can store whether it's, you know, contractor's equipment, really anything can be stored within these units. The project proposes two retaining walls, one on either side of the site, just to help with the grading. There's a pretty substantial grade change along the site, so those walls help mitigate that. We're also proposing two trash enclosures, both surrounded by six-foot-high white vinyl fencing, one at the rear of the site here and one kind of on the easterly portion of the site. The site provides multiple site lights, site poles, and these, we put together a photometrics plan that was included in our site development plans that show the foot candles, that all the new proposed lighting fixtures are proposing to project. As I mentioned earlier, we are proposing a new standing sign at the front, just adjacent to the driveway. The site, or the sign is designed to look identical to the neighboring Union Street Business Park sign. Really, the only difference is that it has this two at the bottom. The site proposes, over to our utility plan here, we're proposing new utilities, both water and sewer. We're proposing to tie into existing water and sewer mains that are within a utility easement at the rear of the property. We have a separate fire and domestic service, and we're also proposing a fire hydrant at the rear of the site. Gas, we're proposing a new service to the main along the side of Upper Union Street. And then electric, we are proposing a connection to the existing transformer. This will have to be coordinated with the electric provider, but we believe that the transformer was installed with anticipation of future development on this lot, so that it should be able to handle the loads from this building. Our drainage approach, it's a bit of a work in progress, as we recently, on Friday, received comments from the planning board, Mike with DPW as well as AIDA. And AIDA did have some questions about our stormwater management system. Basically, just to give a brief overview, when this, when the Union Street Business Park was designed, they designed stormwater basins, an infiltration basin and then a detention basin in this general area. And those were designed with consideration for this entire development. So our approach was basically to match, to match what the initial design intent was as best we could. And actually, when they built the, when they built the one building before they subdivided the lot, they actually put in a few drainage stubs for future, for future development on this lot. So our plan right now is to tie into those lots. Again, we received comments from AIDA and we understand that the stormwater will be changing slightly once we have a chance to revise things based off those comments that we received. And now, I'm gonna pass things over to David Sisson. He can give a quick rundown on the architectural aspects.
Hi, folks, can you hear me okay?
I got you, David.
Okay, great. So Nick did a great job introducing the building, and it's a roughly 43,000 square foot building, a little less than 30 feet to the ridge of the building, the highest point, and as you mentioned, divided to 15 separate bays that a tenant could rent, one or more of those, depending on what their business needs are. Building is covered with an architectural metal panel in a kind of forest or Kelly green, and also metal roofing panels on the top. It's gonna be very similar to the adjacent building, and happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay, thank you. I guess we'll go to Department of Planning with Amy, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to note that they are going to be required to file with Conservation Commission. There is some wetlands in the rear of the property, and they have indicated that on their letter. They have not requested any waivers for the site. Also, I know they're referring to 839 Upper Union Street, but I just want to note that at this time, street number has not been assigned to the site, so they will need to go file that with Mike so he can assign a street number, maybe that number or not, I'm not sure, but I just wanted to make that note, that I refer to it as Upper Union on the agenda, just so that it's not being confused. They are proposing Cape Cod berm throughout the entire site, except at the entrance where the granite curbing is required to be installed. Similar to, we had a similar project just recently over on Washington Street that had a similar concept with this, with the industrial buildings, and a couple of things that the board had requested from them for the hours of operation. They're interested in acquiring that, as well as if there's going to be any regulations on outside storage at this location. And I think, the only my other comment was, the handicap spaces, they're across from the front doors for all the buildings. I don't think it might be maybe better used if they are next to the doors. I know there's only about four of them, so they're not gonna have them in front of every door, but maybe on the side that the doors are located. The handicap spaces could be located there. And I'll defer to Mike and Gary with AIDA for any drainage issues. I do want to comment, if they're going to rely on the button properties drainage system, they probably should be a co-applicant of this application as well, which is not submitted, if that, the way that this is gonna go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. I guess we'll, Mike from DPW, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we reviewed the plan, made a number of comments on this one. First thing I just wanted to point out is I believe this is an industrial zone, and although it's only required in commercial one, commercial two, and business zones, I thought consideration should maybe be given to constructing a sidewalk along the street frontage, as there's currently a concrete sidewalk on either side of this lot, and this is just a gap between, just something to consider. My real concern, though, with the project, though, is they are, as the applicant mentioned, there's two retaining walls, one on the right, one on the left side of the site. The one on the east side, the right side of the plan, is proposed at about 11 feet tall and it's shown approximately about a foot or so off the property line, and that wall will be retaining the soils from the adjacent site, so I'm not sure about the constructability of that wall that close to the property line without tiebacks or any kind of formal design. And I do want to note that the sewer service for the adjacent building is probably about 10 feet behind where that wall would be, also, it's just another consideration. That same retaining wall actually extends into the easement that runs, there's a utility easement along the front and rear of the property with water lines that run through them, sewer line also in the rear. That retaining wall I just mentioned does extend into that easement and does go over the existing sewer, sorry, existing water main also, which is a concern. We would not see that constructed over the utility. The grading plan also shows earth cuts of about two to three feet over the existing water mains that run along both the front and the rear to make the grades work. Concern there is that removing that amount of material over the existing lines, you're gonna lose that amount of frost protection, and so they're probably gonna have to relocate those lines, water mains, as part of that work, if they're, if they would allow them to do that with an easement. Something to be considered there. And again, as they mentioned, the drainage system right now is proposed to connect to the drain system that was approved and constructed in 2005. And while we don't have necessarily a pose connecting to that system, I think they do need to show that this current site, this particular site now that they're working on, needs to meet the current stormwater standards, including the town's recent bylaw we passed last year. So if they could show that it meets all those current criteria, and then still have a normal flow into that system next door, that's not necessarily a problem.
Good. Thank you. Gary from AIDA, you want to comment?
Sure. I had some real significant issues in terms of the stormwater issues associated with this site and the fact that they were utilizing the old system. That old system was designed in 2005, and a lot of the criteria associated with the system as it was installed has changed. So not only does the new site not meet the requirements of the stormwater standards and even the local bylaw standards associated with that...
Gary from Beta, do you want to comment?
Sure. I, I had some real significant issues in terms of the stormwater issues associated with this site and the fact that they were utilizing the old system. That old system was designed in two thousand and five, and a lot of the criteria associated with the system as it was installed has changed. So not only does the new site not meet the requirements of the stormwater standards and even the local bylaw standards associated with that, but even I believe that the existing site, standing all by itself with the currents, with the current improvements that it have, doesn't meet those standards, specifically three and four. I don't believe that the, that the detention basin that they have actually meets the current design criteria. So the ability to be able to utilize that system is a real question mark, and I think they've got, they've got some work to do to be able to prove that. The other question I had was, if you look at the parking spaces, they're counting the parking spaces in front of all the garage access stores, and you look at the lines, the way they line up, I, I'm not sure that's, you know, if those are legitimate spaces or something. And they still have, they still are gonna meet the requirements under the bylaw to be able to get that in. But still, I, I, to show them as legitimate parking spaces, although that's pretty much the, I'll admit, that is the, what they did on the opposite building, the existing one at eight thirty-seven, that's the way they showed it. I do have some issues with the, with the landscaping, they don't have enough trees, they don't provide the screening. Secondly, there is a residential development within five hundred feet of this, so they, there is some screening requirements associated with that, with that distance that they're gonna have to meet, that they haven't, that they didn't address in the first go-around. Other than that, I, I agree with Mike relative to the issues associated with the crossing of the, the utility easement out on the backside and that connection. And I think we've also brought up the issue relative to the, to the wetlands.
Anybody from the board, Amy comment?
I'm good right, right now.
I think, kind of to Gary's point, if I remember correctly, on the eight thirty-seven Upper Union Street project, that the parking space in front of the building ended up being an issue, especially when you put curb stoppers in front of the loading dock doors. If I remember correctly, that was an issue. So I guess the question for this is, I'm looking at the way that the layout for the, some of these spaces that align, the rendering is very nice and shows kind of a nicely layout for the parking spots with the vans kind of pulled right up to the doors of, of the bays. However, the plan itself kind of shows them a little off-centered and not really aligning with the garage doors. So on the points to Gary, I guess maybe looking at that a little closer to make sure that if you're going to have cars that are supposed to be backing into the loading docks, that they line up accurately, and how to, how to deal with that. And again, with the other site, the request from the board was to put in curb stops in front of these parking spots, so is that something we're gonna be looking at here? I mean, if not, then you can probably get away with the parking spots as shown, but I don't know, it's something I came up with last night.
They can look at, yeah.
Yeah, sorry. I don't know if they're necessarily needed at the ones in front of the building, but maybe.
Well, maybe they can relook at the, your parking layout and weed through it, maybe take the ones that are in front of the garage doors as considered parking spaces, make it just a throughway to the door itself.
Sure, yeah, just to, to respond to that, kind of as Gary mentioned, we're, we're, for a use like this, it is, it's typical to have those parking spaces along the face of the building, as we're showing them, similar to what's going on next door. With our experience with the adjacent property, it, it seems that there's a lack of parking, and it can get congested with pars, cars parking along the sides, and it makes things tight to access those overhead doors. That's just why, that's why we're providing a lot more parking than, than the bylaws require.
I don't disagree, I think that you definitely need the additional parking, just making sure it lays out properly. If the intention is to have the spots into the loading dock, then make sure they line up.
Absolutely.
Jen, Mr. Chairman, Jen has her hand up too.
Oh, okay. Jen, you wanna go?
Yeah, sure. All the same comments, assume that pedestrian ways will end up being aligned with all the doors to the tenant units, that type of thing, parking spaces, et cetera. Agree with Amy, that it seems odd to me that the handicap spots are not as close to the building as possible, so I'd like to see that moved to be close to the building, if possible. I, I would like to see the sidewalk connect the two adjacent sites, it's, would seem strange to me to do all this work and then have that continue to be a gap between, between the two sites, it feels like you'd wanna resolve it. And then, just generally, thank you for sharing the renderings from Design Review Commission. I understand this is an industrial building, but, you know, when you enter the site, you're just looking at a blank side of the building. The, it looks like the adjacent building next door has, like, the stone wall continuous in front, and maybe a little bit more landscaping, but it, it, it might be nice to see some more trees or some more landscaping, it, you know, as that first impression or, or right in front of the building to maybe screen some of that, and also address some of the concern for wanting, you know, or needing more plantings on the site, just generally. So, and then same thing with the, you know, stone wall, there are some pieces that, from the original site are, are just kind of ending, or they die on this site. So I wonder if there's, you know, there's that paved parking area and there's the stone wall, like, I wonder if there's a way to terminate some of that spillover from the original site over to the west. But those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you. I actually had a couple, Mike, Mike hit a couple, couple of the big ones is the water cover over the mains. The other big one is the retaining wall up against adjoining property, how are you gonna build that? That's gonna be a pretty substantial wall if it's eleven feet tall. Does this detention basin overflow into the industrial park? Can this one tie into Constitution Boulevard, industrial drainage, this site, this site?
On, on the adjacent site.
Was this calculated to take that load over there?
I, I believe the adjacent site is tied into the industrial park, I'm not a hundred percent sure of that.
Cause this is dumping into that, therefore, gonna be adding more to industrial, I think maybe throw homework on that one, if that being said. In the curbing, we typically either slant granite or, or vertical granite throughout sites like this, first of all, not just kick concrete.
Just to address the, the construction of this retaining wall, there, there is actually a grading easement within this, the corner of this property that, that I think would it, would allow for the construction of that retaining wall.
Okay. At, at any point, we'll probably look for a stamped drawing from an engineer, just to confirm that wall will be built accordingly as well, like we've done in the past in taller walls such as that.
Understood.
Okay. Mike, do you have another comment, or Gary? Anybody in the audience have any comment? Anybody on Zoom? No?
Oh, go ahead, Will.
To the chair, are bollards required in front of the building, or, or like Beth was saying, curb stops?
I don't think curb stops would be a good idea in front of the parking spots.
Front of the doors, no, cause they back.
No, 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 not the doors, but to the, to the side of each door, there's, there's parking.
Oh, you mean to protect the corners of the garage doors and stuffs?
Yeah, I mean, you know. Yeah, no, you go ahead.
I don't know, I mean, just, is it, is it required? I mean, that would be. That's more of a safety thing to protect the building.
Right. Okay. Jake, any questions? Okay. So it looks like still some homework to be done here. Looks like we're moving along to the eleventh, April eleventh meeting continuation.
Make a motion to continue to April eleventh.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Greg Rondo.
Yes.
William David.
Yes.
Rick Bauer.
Yes.
Jennifer Williams.
Sorry, I'm muted, yes.
Beth Whirling, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time, appreciate it.
See you on the eleventh.
Yep, have a good night.
Thanks. Okay, I guess we'll, we'll move on to our next public hearing, which will be three forty-one Union Street.
Chairman, I make the motion to waive the reading.
So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Greg Rondo.
Yes.
William David.
Yes.
Rick Bauer.
Yes.
Jennifer Williams.
Yes.
Beth Whirling, yes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members, for the right and regular role of United Consultants, here this evening is Mr. Robert Vazella, the applicant for this proposed project. The applicant is proposing the change in use of a building located at three forty-one Union Street, lower half of that building, which would actually be with, provided with access off Cottage Street, would be where the business would be located. The business is primarily a wine production and tasting building, also would have a small kitchen area and restrooms located within the lower level again of that, of the building. So what we've done is, we've prepared a site plan, which is providing for a parking layout on the existing parking area, which consists of twenty-two spaces currently, where we've been working with the building commissioner for determination on the parking spaces, and we've come up with nineteen spaces would be required, which we believe we have three excess spaces. We're gonna utilize more various things such as snow storage and a dumpster area, which I'm sure will be questions of the board. Additionally, the applicant is looking to have patio area for outdoor seating, and that area would be of a permeable paper patio material with some screening around the edges of the abutting properties here and here. Mr. Vazella actually resides currently at this location here, and this is an existing industrial building here. A fence will be installed, barrier fence in this location here. Existing fences are encapsulating the area on the other sides. Some of them are white vinyl, approximately six feet in height to the stockade fence here, along this property boundary. We have proposed to make some changes to the utility system, which consists of sanitary sewer connection, as well as a grease trap in this area here for the restaurant use and the winery use. And lastly, we propose to provide some improvements to a stormwater system, which in essence, there is no stormwater system on that portion of the site currently. The proposal is to construct a series of rain gardens that are interconnected, and this area here is proposed to have an underground chamber system below the, the rain garden itself. We have had an opportunity to get comments from the building commissioner, as well as the town planner and the town engineer. Be happy to discuss the project with the board, and Mr. Vazella would certainly be willing to explain a little bit more about the business operations if, if the board was interested to hear. Okay? Thank you.
I guess we're, Amy at Department of Planning, if you have.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. They have filed a special permit for one eighty-five attachment for section three point one three for brewery, distillery, or winery production with tasting room, so that is a special permit. Along with a special permit, they have submitted the limited site plan outlining the site. Some comments that we had, I, I did ask our town engineer, Mike Maglio, to review the site. I did not ask Beta to review the site, I was gonna let the board determine if they felt there was enough drainage to have Beta get involved or not. Sometimes with limited site plans, we do, we don't, so I'm gonna leave that up to the board to make that decision. One of the com, to provide the dumpster location, which I think Rick elaborated on, they've, he's talked about the park in, as I've outlined, the park in requirements is on one space per five hundred square feet. So that's how they've based off their calculations. I think it'd be helpful to show the structures on the site, especially around where the outdoor seating will be, if there are such structures around that area. If there's any sidewalks, that'll be along the site, or locate, if, if spaces one through eight, if they are parked there, how will they go, get to the back of the site? Cause I don't believe there'll be access through the building, so that's maybe just be indicated on the plans if the board decides to do so. They will be required to file with Design Review for any signage that they are proposing. And we did receive two letters of support, which I have included in the packet. Thank you.
Thank you. Go back to Mike from DPW, does he have any comment, Mike?
Sure, thanks. We had a couple of comments on this one. As Rick had mentioned, this is a redevelopment of existing site. The applicant is proposing a net reduction in pervious area, and the installation of several rain gardens to improve the existing drainage on site. Based on the sizing of the rain gardens, they do meet the requirement to retain enough stormwater on site to meet the town's current new bylaw. We just asked it, you know, a note be added to the plan identifying the, the pre-construction and post-construction pervious areas to show the net reduction on the plan. We also like to see a detail, the, the walkway that's proposed along the front of the, the building, where the new parking is, at the, the rear of the building off of Cottage Street, there's a walkway called out, we'd like to see a detail of that. And then, and then for the entrance, they're re, reconfiguring the entrance to that part of the lot off of Cottage Street, and we'd just like to see vertical granite curb for the radius coming into that driveway opening, just to, just within the, the right of way there. And that was all we had.
Thank you. Anybody on the board? Jay, or Paul?
Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, welcome. Thanks for coming in, glad to see you here. I know you have a very successful business already, which is a real benefit to our town. Do you plan on seeing the proximity of your paper lot that's shown on this new plan, connecting that? You know, there's a fence that you're looking to put in, but at any time, do you anticipate connecting your two sites? Will you still be utilizing your existing site, or is that done and this is your new site? How is that working?
Yes, correct. We will, we will not use the existing site.
So that will be discontinued altogether?
Discontinued, mhm.
Okay.
Yes.
Mhm. Okay, and then, let's see. So your current operation has a lot of outdoor activities associated with that, and music and things to that extent, which personally, I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels about that. I like, I enjoy it. But as far as your neighbors, this particular patio is a lot closer to your neighbors now. Tell us a little bit about what that plan is.
Yes, certainly. Actually, the neighbors that are right there at that patio are, right there in the back, came to support me. So really, it's, you have, in the front of Union Street, you have my house, you have their house there, and then the next house over, which is owned by Louis, sorry, his name escaped me right now, but is the house adjacent to the, the lighting store?
Is that the green one? The green one?
The green one, right. He's in Arizona at the moment, but has given his blessing to move forward along the park as well.
All right. Do you know, regardless, sorry, just a few more questions, regardless of, you know, the abutters supporting you and whatnot, do you know how far off that, that patio is from the closest abutters house there? Is that number, is it three forty-nine, is that it?
Three forty-nine, that would be the greenhouse.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Three forty-nine, and then three fifty-three, I guess those, those two houses, I just, maybe some dimensions on the plan showing, even though I know it's a, a patio and you don't necessarily have any setbacks for that, I'd just really like to know how far off it is.
That's one of the comments that Amy had, had brought up and asked for, and we will certainly provide that.
Great, yep. And then, let's see. How do you anticipate, along with the use of the light business, the shared parking? So perhaps they're not open in the evening, but on the weekends, do you perceive that being an issue? Or how and what has that particular use agreed to?
Yeah, so the lighting would stay as a tenant of mine. Their hours of operation are nine to five, so Monday through Friday. I don't see that being, you know, affecting either business.
So they're not open on weekends?
No, they're not.
Okay, good. I guess that's what I had for now for questions.
Great.
I have a few to the chair. Going back to the outdoor patio, are you planning, are you planning to have outdoor entertainment there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, tell me, it's a lot smaller than what you have. And, and you say the abutters are okay with that?
Yes, they are. I mean, usually, we don't have music past 8:30.
All right.
Special permit, so.
All right.
What type of entertainment?
It's basically acoustic.
Okay.
The, I guess, going back to the patio, where there's parking going to be in front of it, I'd like to see some ballards in front of the fence to protect that where it's, you know, you're going to have people sitting outside. And I guess that this question would be to Rick. Is this a site plan or a modification of a site plan?
So we, was filed as a modification of the site plan for a change in use.
Okay.
Question, question is, is there really an actual site plan to modify? Because typically, we like to, a modification is of an existing site plan. Is there any way to generate one, so we can have it a record? You know, that's always been out, you know, the past is the future. We try to create something from what was to move forward, you know?
Yeah, we could, we could produce a research on historical records of the site.
If you could generate something to establish that initial first site plan, so then the modification can fall under that.
Yes, we'll look into that.
Okay, thank you.
And just a couple of more things. The kitchen, are you just prepping food, or you, what are you doing there?
So we're going to offer, you know, small plates to accompany the wine.
Okay. And I guess the other big question is where, you know, your existing doesn't have it. How many restrooms are you going to have?
Restrooms? Yeah, that will be determined by the architect and engineers.
So I mean, it'll be enough to accommodate?
Of course.
Okay. Right, yeah, okay. All right, I'm good.
Can I ask a few questions? I can't see who has their hand up. Thanks, through the chair. First of all, I'm really pleased to see this application. You guys are a bright spot in this area of town, and I think this shows a lot of promise for continuing the growth of your business. And I know the residents of the town and nearby towns really enjoy what you have to offer, so thank you. I just have a few questions. The adjacent parking lot is the parking lot of Downtown Sports. So there are a lot of families and a lot of kids, a lot of traffic coming in and out of that area, especially at times of the year where there's a lot of snow on the ground, because it's an indoor sport facility. I wonder if there's any way to put up a fence between the two properties in order to truly delineate, you know, I know you're showing rain gardens to an extent, but with how close the two areas butt up against each other from a safety and even from an aesthetic standpoint, it might be beneficial to have a fence be continuous to separate those two properties. I was wondering, through the chair, a question to Mike and W, I guess. Is there, are there any plans to put sidewalks on this part of Cottage Street? I mean, it, there's so much benefit to walking here from all the neighborhoods nearby and downtown, and this part of Cottage Street is sort of a no man's land right now. So I'm just wondering if this is on, if there's a plan to have sidewalks here? And then how would they connect to this site? I can't see anybody in the room, so Mike, maybe you can chime in.
Mike or Rick, do you guys want to comment?
Sure, I could, I could answer that, Mr. Chair. So Jen, we actually reconstructed that neighborhood, the roadways and sidewalks, I'd say about four years ago. Cottage Street itself is still under, that section of Cottage Street is still in the moratorium. We added a sidewalk on the other side of the street by the time.
Okay, so Google Earth is just gold.
It might be, yep.
Okay, okay, great.
Concrete sidewalk on the opposite side of the street.
Great, that, I guess that answers that question. Thank you. And my last, my last question is, through the chair, to the applicant, or to Rick. The, the section of the parking lot that has one handicap spot, spots nine and 10, I should say. I know it's a 24-foot wide aisle width, but is that enough clearance and room, like, for particularly with the accessible spot backing in and out? And the corner of the building is like right there. Would ballards be needed, some sort of? Yeah, it's just kind of a funky little triangle, and maybe all the clearances are there, but it just feels like a lot of people would be trying to find a parking spot. It might not be super obvious, those two spots versus all the other spots. And are they connected or not connected? And how do you get there? And a lot of backing in and out. So that was just one comment. I know it's a tight site and you're trying to get as many, to maximize the number of parking spots, and I appreciate that, so just wondering how that would work. But otherwise, it looks great, and I, I'm excited to see how this develops moving forward. Thank you.
Yeah, again, if I may.
Sure.
Obviously, we're trying to maximize the parking. We have the parking determination. We're certainly going to take, take a look at that area as one of the areas we could potentially reconfigure some parking, add some snow storage, things of that nature. So, you know, this has kind of been a fluid, fluid design project, if you will, particularly with the parking. But we wanted to get here and get some input from the board and the neighbors before we went back to the drawing board and hopefully get some finalization on the design. So we really appreciate all the comments we've gotten tonight, and we'll report those into a final design. Thank you.
Thank you.
Because I, I actually had questioned, like, parking spot 10, when you're backing out of there, you're backing into the throat of the road, to the driveway itself, so. And how about the adjoining pass with the triangular piece going out to the corner of Cottage and Union? Any chance of getting your hands on that, to lease it for potential parking? Yeah. Do you know who owns that? I can't remember who owns that.
I knew it was sold to the brother-in-law of the current building owner.
Okay. I, I think, you made me feel good about the parking spaces at Franklin Lighting not being interrupted. I want to make sure that's taken care of, because, and like Mike said, probably going to have to figure out how to get those eight spaces down below too as well, to make it, make it accessible for those people to walk and talk down the park as well. But, and then spots nine and 10, so close to the building. But I think that little corner piece could, could help you quite a bit in terms of parking. So if you do get a pretty good event, you're not having parking, you know, across the street at Franklin Sheep Metal, the package store, and all the other places. And you just want to make sure you have sufficient parking for you, you're going, because it's, it's a, it's a great prospect for that area right there, too. It's a quiet little area, needs some, needs some growth, which is good. Thank you.
More questions, Mr. Chairman? Do you have, correct me if I'm wrong, sorry if I'm, if I'm not, if I'm mistaken, but do you have an existing, like, shared parking situation with the Downtown Sports complex? Is that something that will continue, or?
Yes, it is. That was actually one of the letters of support, was from the building owner, John Burke.
So that'll continue on, that partnership?
Yes, it will.
So I think Jen's comment about the potential fence between the two properties, is there a fence there now?
No, there's not.
So if you were to put in a fence, would you want a gate there or something? Or is it just no fence?
I would offer no fence.
Okay.
And usually, I mean, I'm, I'm just speaking for Downtown Sports, but they're doing drop-off.
Yep.
Right, so, and that, you know, they circle around the back of the building there, but pick up and drop off is, you know.
Yep. So, so with that being said, Mr. Chairman, if that, those particular spots that kind of end up being a tight situation there, one of them is, looks like the ADA spot, maybe just have the one ADA spot, with the understanding that you still have that parking situation that you can share. If you have overflow and there's also on-street parking, so I think the situation with the parking should be.
Wouldn't that have to be?
Because they're over right now with their capacity, so they wouldn't waiver, right?
Right, but wouldn't that have to be joined into this particular site? Wouldn't we need to get a letter stating?
That will have to be incorporated.
Right.
If you can just provide something saying that you have that ability.
As well as the lighting for, I mean, Franklin Lighting as well. Make sure it's all incorporated, so that there's no question later on down the road.
Another question.
Sure.
On the patio, are you going to just, is that accessible from the building?
I just.
Okay. The, so then my other concern is, is, as you're, we're talking about the parking lot from Downtown Sports. I know there's the rain garden, so will they have some kind of a, I guess this would be to Rick, would that have some kind of a high curb there, so that, I'm thinking, safety of coming into the lot?
In this area here?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could look at putting some, some ballards or something there.
Well, I mean, I'm not, you know, just, i- if it's a higher curb, that they're not jumping it, or, you know, I mean, a fence would be nice, but, you know, a fence is not going to stop a vehicle, but.
Right. Yeah, we'll look at that.
Just some kind of, something for safety. I mean, ballards are nice, but not the prettiest either, so.
What height would that be above asphalt anyways, Rick? A foot? Foot and a half?
What is this, huh?
That the rain garden on the, on the side of these, what's that elevation wise, a foot above, basically?
Um.
To build it up a little bit, to?
That would work.
Yeah, the rain garden's depressed from the pavement about a foot.
But, yeah.
Yeah, so it's about a foot in depth, approximately. I'm sorry, when you said built up on?
Sorry.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
Now we're going to answer how a rain garden's higher than the pavement.
Yeah, no, no, I'm thinking built up from, under pavement.
Rain garden bottom's approximately 12 inches below.
Foot below, okay.
You got Jen asking a question.
Oh, go ahead, Jen.
Sorry, just to chime in on that, because, so part of the reason for having a fence between Downtown Sports and, and this property is, in, in the winter, when things are covered in snow, I, I mean, the Downtown Sports, because I coached there and I parked there, there aren't even stops at the parking spot. So I guess I just worry that if there's nothing stopping the cars on the Downtown Sports property from coming a little too far forward, you know, what's stopping them from ending up down the rain garden if they don't realize that there's a question there? Or starting to peek on, you know, onto the pavement? Just with no kind of clear delineation between the properties, you know?
What about like a wooden guardrail of some sort, just a, you know, 12, 16 inches?
Yeah, just.
16, 18 inches off the ground.
Exactly.
Catch it, so the front end of the car doesn't go into the rain garden and, you know, to worry about?
Yeah, we certainly look at that effect.
Six, you know.
Some more substantial than fence, to Willie's point, but.
Yeah.
Some more visual.
Right, yeah. You don't necessarily want to visually separate the two properties, especially if the parking's being used, or downtown parking for this business, but just something to stop the, you know, the vehicles might be useful. Thanks.
Okay, you have one more? That does one more. Okay, one more.
Apparently, I ask a lot of questions, so. Lighting, I don't see necessarily lighting plan on here, so I'm just curious what your plan is for lighting, especially if you have evening activities.
Yeah, I mean, currently, there's some existing lighting on the building, but we can look at that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
I guess, go to anybody in the audience? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jay.
I waited my turn.
I didn't see you raise your hand, sorry.
No, I'm sitting quietly over here. What's the treatment around the rain garden's going to be? Like, for curb? Is there going to be any curb around the rain garden?
No.
It's just going to be wide open?
We weren't proposing any curb on the rain garden.
Um, should we think something from, are you going to get spill over, spill over from the, from the site next door? Like, with, you know, with the grading, I'm just trying to, you know, I'm thinking if it's going to be adequate. I know it's an improvement over the, over the existing condition, just, you know, it's going to get overwhelmed by flow from Downtown Sports.
Um, no, there is some curving currently in this area here, and I can look at it, but I believe their site in the, towards the rear is graining towards the catch basin behind the building. That was my recollection. Hope we can certainly look at that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any issues with deliveries? Schedule them off hours?
Yeah, I mean, basically, we're getting grades twice a year on a weekend, and, you know, I don't see any issues with that.
I have another question. Willie asked one more question.
I have another question. Are you, are you going to leave the, the overhead doors of the existing garage? Or are they going to get replaced?
Good question. So they will all be left, except for one will be covered up.
Okay, I was just curious. Okay, good. Rooftop units?
I don't think you can.
I'm asking.
Redition of like any air conditioning, ventilation.
Doing any rooftop units or anything?
Yes.
All right, we probably want some screening for the neighbors on the roof. There's a law.
Mr. Chairman, could we request some sort of idea what that would look like? Just a simple rendering or something? Is that an anticipated noise from that? Is it, what kind of units are they?
Yeah, what's the rating? DVs?
They should come out the side of the building.
Yep.
Keep them off, or go to the side of the building.
Use your feelings in the room.
Yeah.
Jay, did you have one more question?
I'm good.
Rick, you outside? Anybody in the audience?
I, oh.
No, you're not.
I'm so sorry to ask. I, I'm just piling it on here. Is there a dumpster or dumpster location or need for a dumpster?
He's going to, he's going to put it on the drawing.
Okay, all right, great, thanks.
I can't even feel him, none of you people drink wine.
No, we do, that's the problem.
On Mondays anyways. Hey, anybody on Zoom or anybody in the audience have any comment? And just approach the mic, give your name and address if you'd like to speak and speak in favor.
They gave away, but those were my directed letters, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I was sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, so obviously, you've got some homework.
Particularly over the time to April 11th?
Yeah. Okay, so make the motion continue to April 11th?
Second.
Al Beber?
Aye.
For Paul?
Greg Rondo?
Yes.
William David?
Yes.
Rick Bauer?
Yes.
Jennifer Williams?
Yes.
Beth Worthing, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for my good time. Appreciate it.
Everybody have any general color?
Oh, just a reminder to folks, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind,
Sure.
to fill out your Franklin for All survey. If you haven't already, go to our website. It is, Amy, what's our website?
Can't read it?
It's not on there.
So, yeah, no, so, so this, these cards here are to scan and take the survey. This, this will bring you directly to the survey for our Franklin for All project.
They cannot submit through our website, so?
So you can also find it on our website. It's, it's www.napc backslash Franklin for All. And if you go to that site, you'll see the link to the survey. You'll also see the presentation and the entire meeting that was held on March 7th, the public forum. That's been downloaded on that website. And also, there's a lot of general background information on zoning. So kind of what is zoning, what we're looking to do. And the survey will be live until April 1st.
Okay.
Yep. Yep, and then after that, we'll hopefully have another public forum follow-up. We don't have a date yet, but soon as we do, we'll get that out in the announcement. We don't have a date yet, but as soon as we do, we'll get that out in the announcement to spread the word.
Okay, good. All right. Make a motion or adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who called?
Greg Rondo.
Yes.
William David.
Yes.
Rick Bauer.
Yes.
Jennifer Williams.
Yes.
Beth Worling, yes.
Good night, guys.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.
Good night. Thank you, guys.
Sorry, Ben, I didn't really take over your spiel. No, I'm glad you did because I couldn't remember.